Aloha and welcome to the joint hearing with the Senate Committee Economic Development and Tourism and Senate Committee on Labor and Technology. Today is Thursday, February 6, 2025 at 1:10 p.m. And we are in Conference Room 229. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we must abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene for any outstanding business which would occur on Tuesday, February 11, 2025 at 1:01 p.m. Inc. Conference Room 229. This committee hearing is a 90-minute time slot, so there will be a one-minute time limit for all testifiers. First up is... First up is Senate Bill 1536. Daniel Nahopie, sorry.
Aloha, Daniel Nahopie, Intern President and CEO of the Hawaii Tourism Authority. We stand in our written testimony as submitted. Mahalo.
Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, committee, any questions? No, 1536.
So do we know what the cost might be? Is there a cost factor to this?
So it's a... The position is budgeted in our HTA budget for fiscal '25 at $300,000. And since it's general fund, it would be BNF or any of the additional funding for benefits.
Yeah, what would that be? What's the hit to the budget?
Our usual calculation is 60% of the salary, but the salary hasn't been set yet for this. I think the interpretation is somewhere around $180,000 for... Or $190,000 for the position salary going forward. But it's up to the CEO Search Committee and the Board to determine that.
So is it just you're repealing the exemption only for the President and Chief Executive Officer or for all the positions?
Currently, all the rest of the positions are allowed... Are exempt positions with full benefits as a state employee. It's only the CEO that has the exemption from the retirement benefits.
Okay. And do you know why it was done that way?
Excuse me?
Do you know why it was done that way?
So in... When it was originally created by some of the senators that are here now, there was concern that it may be a position that maybe some bureaucrats might want to just want to sit, get their high three, and not be as effective. And having it open without the benefits maybe allow a better competitive environment. However, I think there have been concerns from other legislators that the amount of the salary needed to get a competitive manager of the tourism authority would be in excess of what's expected for this position.
Well, I think part of that also is because if you have people who had been in the system and maybe retired, already have a retirement, that they don't need to be in the retirement system. And therefore, it will, one, save the state money, save HTA money, or also be able to be more competitive in the salary itself without that having to be exempt with the benefits included. So I think those are all the reasons. And so is there a reason why? Is there a particular reason why that we want to change it?
It's a... There's been discussion amongst Board members that when the original proposal was to do the cost analysis of a competitive position without the benefits, it came up of $300,000 or more. Other Board members were not supportive of that amount, but were willing to go with a lower amount which included benefits. And they thought that would encourage a qualified candidate to apply for the position.
Okay, so as long as HTA is not paying for the benefits, then you guys want to do it? If you both have to... It's the cost for the benefits.
It would still be within that $300,000. They would adding both the... I'm saying around $190 plus the benefits would still be under $300,000.
Why wouldn't you look at doing like 401K where, you know, they come in and they can... Affordable, the retirement will be portable instead of being tied to the IRS system?
This was one of the proposals. We're not privileged as staff to the discussions of the CEO Search Committee and their decisions and discussions.
Okay, and their decision was to come in and ask for this?
That was one of the proposals.
What was the other proposal?
I don't know what the other... This is the only one I know that was brought up and discussed amongst Board members.
So where's your chair?
Said he was not available to come to this meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Moving on to Senate Bill 1571. 1571 relating to tourism. First up, DEBED.
Good afternoon, Chair Decoit, Chair Aquino, and members of this committee. DEBED has sent in recent testimony in support of this bill. And I know that you folks have it. I'm here to... We are here to answer any questions that you may have, but we do stand in our testimony in support. There's different facets on this bill of, you know, there's moving parts. So if you do have questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you. Next up, Daniel Nahopie in HTA.
Aloha again. The HTA stands on its written testimony with comments. And in particular, we look forward to more complete discussion after hearing some of the other testifiers today and work with legislators and interested parties to discuss the multiple issues that were raised.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I'm going to go back. You said that you're not privy to the discussions by the Board, but isn't all the decisions supposed to be in public?
This is a CEO Search permitted interaction group. So it is the six members are closed meetings. And because some of the staff may be potential candidates for the CEO, no staff were allowed to be a part of the meeting.
Yeah, but any decision that comes out at some point has to be public, right?
So this is one of the discussions from the Board members themselves. The final report...
Of the search?
In the search pig. This is not a board... A full Board recommendation, this bill. And also, it was not discussed at the Board meeting.
Okay, but you're representing... Your testimony is representing HTA?
Yes.
So how can you say that this is not for the Board? Shouldn't you be only...
So...
Shouldn't you only be testifying myself that the Board has approved?
This was approved by our Legislative Pig, which is given the responsibility to craft the legislation. And they made up a Board member.
Shouldn't the Board then acknowledge that or support that before you come before us? Bring it before us?
Through the Legislative Pig of the Board.
Okay, so then that's a Board issue. So that shouldn't all that be public then? I'm saying whatever came out of the Pig goes... Supposed to go to the Board for their approval.
Correct.
So then that's public. So that you should be representing what they say and not the search is a Pig before us.
So this discussion comes from our Legislative Pig, and they are given responsibility.
Yes, but any decision coming out of the Pig is supposed to be then adopted by the Board, right? Before it's supported by you and the employees? Or any Pig that come out, then you're free to just represent that the HTA is supportive of this? Or is your position?
Those have been vetted by the Legislative Pig, which is a different group, and they were given responsibility.
Yes, but any... So who established the Pig?
The Board.
Okay. So anything that comes out of the Pig needs to be adopted or approved by the Board?
For a Legislative Pig, they have certain... The Board passed a resolution that allows the Pig to make certain decisions based on items or policies that were identified in that resolution.
Yes, but you're coming before us to ask for a bill, a law, that's going to affect HTA? Not the Pig, but HTA? Okay, so was this run by the Board? And are you representing the Board in your testimony today?
I have to recall if it was brought up at the last meeting, but there was no vote on this bill at the last Board meeting that occurred on the 30th of January.
Okay, I recommend we defer this measure until we find out from the Board exactly what...
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump over.
Next up, Randy Pereira in opposition. Michael Holder in opposition. Pelani Sonola Pauli in opposition. Linda Camaro in support. Chad and Hira in support. Faith to Iploto in support. Rosie F. Davis in support. Joey Chan in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on the measure?
Aloha mai kako, esteemed Senators, Chair, Vice Chair, Kinalae Mawana, Wong Kalu. In both professional and personal capacity, I am the Ambassador for the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement. Sentiments regarding this bill. At current point, I am not able to support the entails of the bill for two particular points. Item number two, which speaks to changing language that says... That removes Hawaiian sense of place and says Hawaii sense of place. This is a very complex and nuanced onion. In Hawaii 2025, there are far too many instances where the presence of Kanaka in our places and spaces is highly contingent upon language that ensures our place. So while it's important that we uphold aloha and we honor this understanding of which our communities have done island-wide.
You can wrap them up because the one minute left, please.
We have aloha for everyone, but at the same time, this language stands to impact our rightful place and that which can ensure it. Also, item number three, but I'll let my colleague speak to that. Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you.
Aloha mai kako, Madeline McKegg here on behalf of the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, also speaking in opposition of SB 1571. The second point we want to raise is around the Section 3, which is removing the ban for HVACB Board members to wait two years to then be on the HTA Board. I think we are largely concerned about conflicts of interest. We don't really understand why this provision is being removed. Two years feels like a correct amount of time to make sure there are no conflicts of interest between HVACB and HTA. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify in the room? Seeing none. Members, any questions?
Yes, Senator Favella. For just the tourism part, I'm kind of confused. Do you guys have a provision within DEBED to tourism or that's for HTA?
Both.
Explain what you mean by both.
Well, DEBED has through statute what we're responsible for, which is tourism too, but HTA specifically.
What is the provision?
I'm sorry, exactly.
What is the provision? Isn't it just marketing?
It's... Well, mainly marketing, but we've gone into destination management and other things like that because this body and local people have had concerns about, you know, their place, their destinations. A good example is Ayana, Wainapa Napa, you know, places that you folks have funded money to support. And now it's a thriving place. And there's a management system included in those destination management.
Yeah, the problem was previously, before we had enacted certain provisions. I'm just wondering, what is the gain for, you know, just trying to almost include or exclude the two entities moving forward? I just thought that in the statute that DEBED should be responsible for the marketing and budgeting needs to be, you know, doing like how you guys doing the Maui Way wildfires. I just don't understand the more inclusion into the HTA portfolio.
Okay, Senator, is there something in the bill that you're referring to? Or the marketing plan from...
This is just my question.
What's that?
It's my question. So we only can ask questions that's put in the bill?
No, but I'm trying to...
I'm just asking a question. If you can answer, that's okay. You can send them to us later. Okay, Chair, that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions on the committee? Senator Kim.
So Jimmy, can you on page 13 define what is the definition, maybe not even definition, but the translation of a Hawaiian sense of place versus a Hawaii sense of place?
You know, I personally, there's a... The difference is Hawaiian is more specific, in my personal opinion. You know, I think when you look at Ala Mawana, it's Hawaii's shopping mall. If it was Hawaiian shopping mall, then people might think it's only for Hawaiians. So that's how I would interpret that. But I'm no grammatical English history major, so that's just my interpretation.
Did you want to give us?
Yes, mahalo. Hawaiian sense of place certainly does not mean that we are exclusionary. Hawaiians are bound. If any Hawaiian understands the word aloha, we know. It's got to be inclusive. However, the history of Hawaii has found that we're multi-ethnic, but there really hasn't been much opportunity for all the other ethnicities to have more of a place in Hawaiian culture likewise. So again, this is a nuanced and complex situation. If we went to anywhere else in the Pacific or anywhere else in Asian continent, we would be expected to learn the language of the place and learn the customs and the culture. But here in Hawaii, now Hawaiians hang on to remnants of what creates this space and ensures that our place is not so marginalized that one day we just disappear. As someone who has worked for both public and private sector, I experience this too often. If I didn't have the personal reputation at the business tables, they would have ensured that Hawaiian understanding and Hawaiian things are not present.
I strongly agree. I mean, I think that it bothers me every time when I go to a different country. I'm expected to understand the culture or understand the language, and they're not going to translate for me. But we come to Hawaii, and obviously, we have to translate in all the different languages. And I'm not trying to be racist or anything. But if you come here, then you should adapt, right? But my concern is not necessarily what you're saying, but the interpretation by others, what Hawaiian sense of place they need versus Hawaii sense of place. Because, for example, I was told that because of this language that all plants or all foliage around the convention center should be only Hawaiian plants, Hawaiian native plants. So is that your interpretation?
It creates opportunity for this. However, as we all know in the room, depending on who is in the office of authority, they're going to hold it to a certain kind of, how do I say? A tenacity that may seem unapproachable. It's important that we create space and place for things Hawaiian, be it plants, be it language, be it our culture. And it's not to say that we want to exclude other people. But again, this is Hawaii. Everyone else who came here really have homelands where the presence of who they are and what they represent is still strong. In Hawaii, this is our only home. And without that, I think perhaps what should be explored is, number one, through conversation further down the road, how can we ensure that Hawaiians are not marginalized right out because of language, political language? And what can be done? In the case of the Hawaii Convention Center, there's lots of room for us to honor what is an ethnic melting pot. But at the same time, Hawaii should be celebrated for what we can master as Hawaiian culture and take pride in this. And also, I dare to challenge my contemporaries in the Hawaiian community that we have to also be of the resources to teach others and bring others into the fold.
But at the end of the day, some of these things will get adjudicated in the courts if we're not careful.
Yes.
Which then marginalizes Hawaiians and so forth, which we don't want the courts to be the ones to make this determination. We should be the ones to make the determination. In the case of Hawaiian native plants, we know that many of our plants came from other countries and has then come to be like their Hawaiian native plants. But again, who's going to interpret that? Who's going to make that decision? And if it's going to be such where, you know, I can see if we will then be, as plants die or as we need to do more landscaping, new landscaping, that we try to include where we can, other than putting it in, you know, so strict that you got to remove all the plants. We don't care what the cost is, and we want you to put this in. And I'm just saying that it might not be you, but there's others that will interpret it as such and then take us to court to make that determination. So we have to be careful how we wordsmith, like you said.
Yes.
You know, how we do these things? Because there are a lot of legal ramifications down the road without the intent that we're trying to, you know, marginalize Hawaiian culture or Hawaiian community.
I would say, Senator, that I don't know if that was just an example that you were using because that was a real story. It did happen at the convention center. And then there was an individual from a group that went over there and told the manager they had to change all of the plants. And he said, "What?" And this was before my time. But somebody did reinterpret HRS that that is what the convention center should be doing. So it's not... Maybe you heard the story?
I did hear the story, yes.
But it happened.
Which is why I brought it up because that's just, you know, the tip of the iceberg at some point in time. And I don't know that that's the intent, but that's what happens when these kinds of languages get put in. We lose control.
If I may, Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement is prepared to provide support to this body to help further this discussion and to ensure that not only that there's balance, equity, fairness for all those who are in Hawaii, but how to ensure through appropriate language that does not become exclusionary to Hawaiians because there's nothing to protect us.
And the other thing, and again, you know, I'm sure the Hawaiians will get upset with me by me saying this, but I'm going to say it anyway. You know, I'm all for the Hawaiian language. And I am a student of Antimakia Uts from when I was really young. But when our laws get to the point where, for example, the agenda at HTA, it's translated into Hawaii, right? And I know we have to Hawaii hire translators to do that. And then some of them quit and so forth. But I don't even see OHA translate their agenda. And it's not to say because they don't that we shouldn't. But who actually is reading it that, you know, requires us to that extent? Because I don't think anybody on the Board except one, maybe two, can read Hawaiian, right? And again, it's like, you know, how are we determining what's... What's the word I'm saying? What's practical? What is going to make us more efficient? Because everything costs. Because I'd rather spend that money on Hawaiian programs. I'd rather spend that money on educating our... You know what I'm saying? Spend the time and effort on things that are meaningful, why are things are meaningful? Than just translating an agenda into Hawaiian language, which I'm not sure who actually benefits by that.
To support, to speak to the point that you're making, there has been significant effort made to enrich and empower, strengthen Hawaiian language. There has not been comparable progress made to the normalization of Hawaiian language beyond the community of ethnic Hawaiians and those who choose to speak it in this room alone. This is not a criticism to this body, but the ability to speak Hawaiian here in the capital is really, really small. And so how is it that we can normalize it so that there is greater logic? Because I would agree with you. If resources are being spent and not everybody can do it, then to somebody who can't speak it, it doesn't make too much sense. But again, how do we do this? So this requires greater conversation. I agree, resources should be put to support programs. But how do we make these programs meaningful for the larger body of people here in this capital, of people around in our community? At the political and at the economic level, Hawaiian language is still not at a primary forefront. But yet, much has been put into it. And we have to have some serious discussions about what exactly is the place, politically and economically, of Hawaii Hawaiians' culture, language to thrive?
And that's one very important aspect. But the other aspect is then, how does one and our children go out into the world armed with this language and armed with the Jitri and not be able to necessarily compete or do things on a worldwide basis? You know, because, hey, when my son was three years old, I tried to get him into Punanaleo, and they rejected us, okay? They rejected us. And they rejected because we didn't speak Hawaiian. And I said I was willing to learn Hawaiian. And they rejected us because he... I said he might go to Kamehameha School. And they said, "Well, Kamehameha School doesn't have a Punanaleo course or a program." And so for all those reasons, you know, so when you say that, you know, we're trying to marginalize Hawaiians, they turn around and marginalize us. So I'm just saying that, you know, these are issues that are very concerning as to the real world and where we're headed in the real world as to, you know, how the Hawaiian culture and language have a place. But at the same time, you know, in a whole scheme of things, you know...
With all due respect to all the sentiments shared on behalf of this Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement, as the ambassador, I can commit personal time to help sit at the table and to speak to these elements that are in discussion.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Thank you. And I think thus where we're at is the discussion, you know, Hawaiian, Hawaii. I can tell as a native Hawaiian myself, I believe we've had that sense of purpose to make sure that is addressed, be it Hawaiian, be it part Hawaiian. So I guess my question to DEBED becomes, even within DEBED, and we talk about our agenda. Because there are things that at HTA, for example, the agenda, do I actually have one Hawaiian that is doing the agenda? Or am I paying for somebody else to do this agenda if we truly want to address that? And if it's not that, have, in this case, you guys meetings, has it also had a diversity of being interpreted into a different language of your agendas whether you open it up in protocol?
Okay, I'll answer the questions to what I know. When I first got there, I asked a question of who interprets the agenda in Hawaii? And so it was my understanding that it was contracted up. Today, I... That was over a year and a half ago. So I'm not sure. It's not staff, doesn't it? Right from the beginning? It was always done?
Since I have been there, it's staff.
Okay.
But I understand the two staff people left. And so you only have one person left at HTA that can do the translation? And then who determines that he's doing it correctly? That it's interpreted correctly? Because I couldn't hold him accountable.
At the time when we were, at the time when we had both.
No, now, now, not at the time, now.
I will have to look at the protocol for that. We had three, they passed it around.
So now it's just one person determines that?
I also.
So so my question is, what were what was that? What were the taxpayers paying for in the contract? If if I had?
The interpreting of the agenda.
How how much?
I I I can't, that was before my time, Senator, I'm sorry. I I can work with the interim CEO and president and and find out what that is.
My my understanding was we were forking out $250,000 in our contract.
And that may have been a contract that included other things. I I I cannot answer that with, you know.
So so going forward, let me just ask this question. Have we been inclusive or have we been exclusive? Because I believe you're also a native Hawaiian. And, you know, and not trying to be biased or anything. We were raised to, you know, embrace, to to share and welcome as well.
I think for years Hawaiians have over embraced, and that's why we are where we are today. But I understand and I totally respect Kumuhina and and her position. But as a board member and as the D-Bed, head of D-Bed, people ask me that exact question. Are we just doing this for Hawaiians? And absolutely not, we're doing this for everybody. But the question comes up. So I think what has happened with the renaissance in the language and the culture, and you're a big part of it, Kumuh, Kuhi is a big part of it, OHA is a big part of it. I don't think, I don't think we can ever go backwards because it has gone so far. Look, my my letterhead, the the department name is in Hawaii. So are your agendas. So I think we've come a long way. And I understand your point, Senator.
And I'm not saying that, you know, we we don't, you don't incorporate some of them. But to go to the whole detail where every part of the agenda is going to be then interpreted, which you don't, is your whole testimony interpreted?
No, no, no.
No? Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So if you're going to go to that extreme, then everything, and then I don't know who's going to actually read it, but it has to have also some purpose other than just, you know, to get the language out there. Because, yeah, we have it on ours as well. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have some lines in there, but, you know, to interpret every single agenda item and the per the meaning, not the meaning, but the description of the bill, that takes it a little bit, unless we only have Hawaiian speaking people that, that's the whole purpose, right? For a lot of these, a lot of these translations. So that the people present, if they don't speak the language or read the language, that they will understand what is being taking place here in this building, correct?
Sure. And so this particular item, and Daniel can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't, I'm not sure that it went in front of the whole board for a vote on the testimony. But I will say that currently there are six native Hawaiians on the board at HTA. Six.
How many of them read and understand Hawaiian language?
Probably only, I don't know, Mahina.
Mahina speaks Hawaiian.
Mahina, right.
And Mufi is Polynesian.
But you also speak English very well and you read very well English.
If you include Mufi as Polynesian, then that's seven.
Yeah, but he doesn't read or.
I'm not.
Or speak Hawaiian.
But I'm just.
Probably speak more Hawaiians than he does.
If I may, again, normalization of any language. If I had my way, I would create much greater opportunity on on both the Kanakaen as well as every other ethnicity for all of you to know more Hawaiian, to hear it, to actually see it. When it's on the news, when it's in in businesses and when beyond just words, but when people can actually operate with it. But again, this then starts to peel away at the onion. And the only generations that we can impact are the ones up and coming now, likely, as you said. We can't turn the ti- hands of time back. What we're speaking to in this room right now is the larger sense of, do we as a people continue to have a place in Hawaii based on the established laws, the established climate that ensures that we don't get left out? And again, I I completely hear what you say. But this is, for example, this is Mahina Olelo Hawaii. We now have to have a month to celebrate Hawaiian language because, why? It's not the main normal language. It's a legal language of our islands, but it's not a main normal language that's honored every day of the year. You know? Imagine going to Japan and saying, we're going to celebrate Japanese language for one month. It doesn't make sense. You know, here in Hawaii, this is a complex and nuanced discussion. It's not easy to have, we don't have enough time. You have other things to get to in today. But please, your consideration, before any hasty decisions are made, I look to those Hawaiians on this body as well as everyone else who has aloha for what this is representing. I look to you to be able to support and connect with us and support your colleagues who may not have the same space or place yet, maybe not at this table, but elsewhere in this building. And I look to all of you to continue to support that which ensures that we don't disappear.
And I will give the same challenge to all of our advocates and Hawaiian groups, be it OHA, be it Kamehameha Schools. I mean, we, I have tried for years to get a Hawaiian music dance museum established, tried to get at the Convention Center, no support, no support for all these entities. I'm not Hawaiian by blood, my son is, but I grew up with it and I trained under it. And so, you know, whether I'm blood or not, this doesn't matter. That's that's the Hawaiian. But who's fighting for that? Every every time we turn, no support. The only way we're going to get support for Hawaiian Culture Center is if we allow 40 40 feet on on the on the ocean side. And that's the only way OHA is going to do it. You know, and it shouldn't be that way. It shouldn't be that way, it's a shame. And it's not a shame because it's government, but the shame that the people, the Hawaiians, and and the money that they have and the money that OHA has, that we have not done it. It has not been done for the people. And then they come here and then say that we're marginalizing. I'm sorry, you know, for years I have been, I have been pushing and fighting and for that. It's not come about.
Okay, thank you. I am gonna go to decision making. This was a short break, short break of decision making.
Mahalo, Senators.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're back on decision making for the agenda of February 6 at 1:10 PM. First up, Senate Bill 1536 relating to Hawaii Tourism Authority. Amendments passing with an SD1 and affecting the effective date to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? Seeing none, Chair votes, aye, or Vice Chair for the vote?
Vice Chair votes yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Labor and Technology, same recommendations. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on Senate Bill 1536, recommendations to pass with amendments noting Senator Ihara excused. Are there any reservations or no's? If not, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up, Senate Bill 1571 relating to tourism. Thank you for the testimony on both sides. I think this warrants the continued discussion in regards to Native Hawaiian and the preference of Native Hawaiian as well. This bill also has another committee that it will go to. I think we've had, like I said, great conversation, inclusiveness. And again, always remembering our sense of who we are and where we came from. I'd like to continue to work with the different organizations and groups as we move forward and retaining, of course, Olelo Hawaii as it will continue to be something we need to work on more, not just of the state, but also with OHA and all our other partners that we have out there. So with that being said, Senate Bill 1571 relating to tourism, we will be passing with an SD1. And we will make necessary technical corrections and defect the effective date to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? Senator Senator Awa?
Heard the discussion, appreciate it. For me, surface level alone, seeing Hawaiian cross out, replaced with Hawaii, there's never a time that I can support that before you know.
Thank you, Senator Kim.
Yes, I want to ask for the one year to be back to two years as far as the time between serving on HTA and HVCB. That was an issue just years and years ago, and I hate for us to go backwards on this.
Okay. Okay, so acknowledged, and I will add that. Senator Favella?
Yeah, so I just want, you know, everybody to understand when we're going to stop really trying to think that we're going to inclusive of Hawaiian and Hawaiian language. I understand, I never get the chance to talk to the D-Bed Chair, but, you know, we've been worrying about Hawaiian language in the school. Nobody was worried about getting sued for not having Hawaiian language in the school and saying that because we was going to get sued or something like that. It didn't happen about the plants. But I don't know when we're going as a building to start really stand up for the Hawaiian language. I cannot speak Ho, but again, we excluded because we like make changes to include everybody. Hawaii would include Hawaiians had included everybody. That's the problem we have of the overthrow, because we had included everybody with aloha. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
And I've already known this, thank you.
Thank you. So with that being said, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
No.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, Labor and Technology, same recommendations. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote?
Voting on Senate Bill 1571, recommendations to pass with amendments noting Senator Ihara excused. Are there any reservations or no's?
No.
No vote for Senator Favella. Share your recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, aloha and welcome. Welcome to the hearing with the Senate Committee Economic Development and Tourism. Today is Thursday, February 6, 2025 at 1:15 PM, and we're in Conference Room 229. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event, we must abruptly abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties. We will reconvene as soon as we're able to. New notice that we posted on Hawaii Legislature website, the committee will reconvene for any outstanding business on February 11 at 1:02 PM in Conference Room 229. First up, Senate Bill 986 relating to tourism. Daniel Ho P. with HTA.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Daniel Ho P., interim CEO of HTA. HTA has submitted written comments to this bill, and I want to iterate that we have, HTA has concerns for this bill because world conflict and other economic crises have the same adverse impact of Hawaii tourism industry as a natural disaster or catastrophic event, particularly when coming to, when it comes to providing assistance to tourists during emergency. A good example is back in 2008 with the HTA and Aloha Airlines collapse. There was need for additional support to rebook the visitors, assist them as they were stranded here in many other world conflicts like 9/11. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. We only have a a small comment, and that is, we suggest that this emergency fund be consolidated with the others into the existing Emergency and Budget Reserve Fund. You know, when we have a real emergency on our hands, it's it's going to be tough to, you know, figure out how much money we have and where where our resources are if if the funds are spread out in too many places. I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next up, Pamela Tumpa, testifying on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce with comments. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions?
Okay. How many funds do we have? Different funds for an emergency?
I don't have that all, I'm just looking D-Bed. I'll get I'll get you that.
Because this one is asking for, what, $3 million? To reduce it from five to three? So we're, this bill is asking that it be reduced from five to 3 million?
Yes, that's what's stated here in the bill.
Is that enough for a disaster?
So depending on the type of disaster and the recovery efforts, we have expended the 5 million, both for relocating visitors, supporting the shelter at the Convention Center, and then immediate marketing and information about Maui and bringing visitors back.
Have we gone beyond the 5 million?
Then the HTA budget also reallocated additional funds for marketing for recovery efforts. And we still see, as the economists have pointed out, that all, there still needs to be additional infusion of marketing and later, long-term infrastructure development in the visitor industry on Maui in order to recover from the disaster.
So where would that money come from, additional funds?
Right now, we are asking in the fiscal year 26 budget for additional funds. However, that means currently, in this time period between January and June, we're not allow, we will not have funds to say an activation in the spring period as well as any other development for recovery.
So Tax Foundation, Tom, you still there? So you're saying that we should combine all the emergency funds? So I guess you're you're saying the statewide? So if there is an emergency that the funds might eventually, we have to grab it from other other funds? Is that what your testimony was for?
Yeah, no, I mean, we are, we have, I think, emergency funds in several places. I I'm not aware of how many there are or where they're at. I I know of this one, I know of the 328 L dash 3. I think there are others, but I'm not sure. But what I'm trying to avoid is having money squirreled around the state in all kinds of places that we don't know about.
Right.
And then, number one, we can't get to them unless there's somebody who knows where the heck they are, right? And 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 number two, once we, you know, know how much there is, then we can better plan for what to do when the emergency in fact hits.
Right, and like in this case, if we utilize all of it that's in the Tourism Emergency Fund, then we have to go and maybe get some from the other funds, right? I mean, to to help pay for whatever needs that there might arise.
Right, which which wouldn't be necessary if you had all the emergency funds in one place, because then you'd know where to go.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, moving on to Senate Bill 1641 relating to Voice, to State of Hawaii Film Commission. First up, D-Bed, Dean.
Governor, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, D-Bed stands on his testimony in support.
Thank you. Next up, Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii.
Aye, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Hoy, the Chamber of Commerce, here to answer the questions and say testimony in support.
Thank you. Next up, Tuie Scanlon for IATC 665.
Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tuie on the Scanlon President of IATC 665, a native international trustee. We send our ready testimony in strong support.
Thank you. Next up, Pam Tumpa, Support, Chamber of Maui, Chamber of Commerce, Shereen Ballas. Yep, please.
After that last thing, man, it was too much. This this is going to be an even stronger testimony. Aloha, my name is Shereen Ballas. Senator Decoy, Makarokin, Okai, Fukunaga, and Awa. and Awa. Mahalo nui for hearing me. I was appalled to find out that the film commission was not established. That just trips me out as a person. But on behalf of the people that are in this industry, I speak, you have my written testimony, but I speak on behalf of those that have moved away since the productions have left. And having this film commission is important to all of us, because it means, what's happening right now, how come? We got to have people that are there, that are willing to make this film industry work. So in other words, if we have this film commission, then all the stuff that's happening in our questions for the film industry, it'll be answered by this commission. So please establish one for us. Mahalo nui.
Thank you. Mahalo for your testimony. Next up, we have, you know, we have numerous people in support. Does anybody in the room wishing to testify on this matter?
I can just stand on ours.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, you know, I didn't have your, okay, please.
Yeah, hi, I'm Marie Chapala Elmore with SAG-AFTRA, and we are supportive of this, and I'm going to stand on my testimony in support, but also available for questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Seeing none, questions, members? Senator Kim.
So the film commission, we envision, what, that they're going to be in charge of every thing?
Long term, that would be the vision, correct. So in meeting with the stakeholders and having discussions with the industry, there are three areas that this could start to address. Overall, treating the creative industries or the film sector as a major industry, a board or commission would help establish that. Right now, if we look at some of our other major economic drivers, they have boards and commissions. Hawaii Tourism Authority, Agricultural Business Development Corporation, all of our attached agencies have boards and commissions.
Yeah, many of the commissions are a mess. And it doesn't, so when you say it's going to address everything, you know, it's not necessarily the panacea.
No, and I agree with that. And we recognize that too. We did. We did recognize that in this discussion too. But also, when you look at what productions have to go through right now, it's not an efficient process. So if they shoot on county, they got to go to county office. If they shoot on state, they got to go in front of BLNR.
So how does the commission change that?
So long term, it would be nice to have a structure where the board or commission is the one-stop shop, long term.
Yeah, but that's not going to happen. I mean, the cities, they're not going to give up their regulatory agencies.
That's why they're included as the commission, bringing them all to the table.
Yeah, because then you become, then this commission becomes a regulatory agency? Is that what their intent?
They could become an agency that approves the permits, which those boards do now, the Board on Land and Natural Resources, they approve the permits. We approve state permits with our Hawaii Film Office, and county approves their permits.
Okay.
Part of that too is productions get a green light on a short notice.
I guess I'm looking at it like today in Guam, we heard about the film stage out in Kalalau. Then we have West Oahu, we have this $37 million creative media. Then we hear there might be one, you know, I'm hoping that the commission is going to be able to pull all of this stuff in to guide us where we're going, what we're doing, and the productions coming in. I guess, you know, the permits is one thing, and I'm not sure as far as that happening immediately, but I'm hoping what's going to happen immediately is, and again, the commission's only as good as the people that get appointed to it. And trust me, we have people on boards and commissions that sit there, I don't know what's good on their resume or what, but they don't end up doing the homework, they're not there bird dogging what's going on, they don't know all that exists out there, you know? You know, some of the media people, the film people didn't know about the ACM building in West Oahu that's not getting the maximum use of it, you know what I'm saying? So I'm hoping that this commission is going to be doing all of that.
Senator, I understand what you're saying there with the silos, lack of communication. So in the info briefing last week, there was a deck, it was very in its early infancy stage, that broke out five different areas, working backwards from exporting and marketing of a local film production. And so if we're going to market and export, we needed to get studios. Studios need to be filled by productions. And under the productions, it would break down with a commission to help manage, coordinate, organize that. And then coordinating prior to that with ACM, the training, and then the workforce development plugins. So we're putting a framework together, speaking with the industry, understanding what factors are. I understand, yeah, past practice, boards and commissions are not always the panacea, but we have to look at different ways to bring this industry in one area, so we can really make the investments.
I understand. I just hope that by just passing a bill stating that we're going to have a film commission, that that's the end of it.
No, it's not.
You appoint five people or eight people to this commission, and then it's like rudderless for years, you know what I'm saying?
And I'm not going to guarantee it's going to, as soon as it's established, and in one year, it's going to fix everything. In the discussions and looking at this, we understand it would take two or three years, possibly, before this becomes a sound commission, because we're not asking for any of the other permitting processes that come in under now. It's just, it's a start of a restructure for one of our primary industries that we've identified for the state.
And who's going to structure this?
Director's Office is working with CID and the stakeholders.
So is the report, is the report?
Yeah. I didn't see it in the bill, but it can provide you a report and update. Let me see if it's in the bill. Yes, requires reports in legislature.
Another question, seeing none. Moving on to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senate Bill 1343 relating to Small Business Regulatory Review. First up, D-bid Dean. Thank you. Next up, Jonathan Ship from Business Regulatory Review Board.
I'm representing the SPRV today.
Name, please.
I'm Shitam Ariola, Program Specialist for the SPRV.
In?
D-bid.
In support opposition?
In support.
Okay, it's funny you said it. Thank you. Next up, Mary Albitz for Small Business Regulatory Board in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none. Any questions from the committee?
Yes.
Senator Kim.
So how many members on this review board?
Currently, we have 10 in deep. We have 11 available seats, but 10 filled right now.
And 10 filled, just one not filled.
Right now.
And you cannot get quorum?
We've had technical issues previously, where, because we have off-island board members chiming in hybrid or remote, we've had issues with drop-offs. Also, previous vacancies, also, we've had issues at that point with quorum, yes.
So what exactly you're asking?
We're asking to, it's amount of board members in the seats versus seats for the board.
Okay, so you have 10, 10 now. And so if only four members show up, what's your quorum?
Which it should be three, yeah.
So three people going to make the decision for the whole board?
We're requesting that.
That's crazy. I mean, you're going to have a small number of, what, less than even half of the people making the decision? And then if of the three, you have one person going against, the two people make the decision? You guys thought about that?
So it would be the seats, right?
The way it's written is that, we actually just recently filled two of the vacant seats during the interim. At that point, it would be those that are seated in the filled seats. So if you have 10, seven are vacant, I'm sorry, three are vacant, it would be of the seven.
Well, so not the people that show up at the meeting, but the number of.
Seats filled.
Seats filled, yeah, right, right. So quorum of the seats that are filled. If they're vacant, they wouldn't count towards a total.
And what's the incentive to fill in the seats?
We're putting, we do push hard. I can speak for our department. We worked with boards and commissions of office regularly, checking in on statuses, working even with the legislative body if there was their appointed seat, to work with them to get our seats filled.
And what kind of absences do you have?
Four, I would have to get, I can get a rule call, but first spur, but.
So do you have a thing if you have three absences?
Oh, I'm sorry, that way. I got to look if there's a rule. Like, I'm familiar with some boards and commissions.
Our board itself, I know in the past, we've had, if there are three absences, the board itself can make that decision amongst each other, have a discussion, and vote on having them. No, we haven't had to go to that point. We've had our board members resign, knowing that their seat is important, and that they want to fill it with someone who is a little bit more, that's going to contribute.
Right, and I think that's the case. And, you know, again, we were talking about film commission, and if we get people on the commission, they don't show up, or we cannot make quorum, we can't make decisions, and you got to come in and change it. It's crazy, right?
I would hope that if they say yes to it, that they would put their time.
That's what we all hope, right? I mean, how many boards and commissions we have?
Overall, I only account for D-bid, and we have, of the seven, I think, five.
Yeah, but on the state.
I don't know how that counts.
Hundreds. I know, and our Senate President, we had to appoint hundreds of boards and commissions, and the governor's office couldn't even keep track of who was quitting, who was leaving, who was vacant. Back then, I mean, and we had to put this whole matrix together just to keep track of all these boards and commissions.
We do have a matrix.
Yeah, I mean, some of these boards and commissions really should be dissolved, because we don't know what they do. And we cannot find people to fill up, you know? So I'm just concerned that we're putting people in that's not taking their, I mean, yeah, they don't get paid, so that's hard. But if they're going to say they're willing to serve and get confirmed, then we need for them to show up, right?
And it's not part of the bill, but I mean, you're right with the counts. Is it a look at reducing the members of the board so we can get more quorum? Or, we've even put, as you mentioned, they're volunteers, but yet we've hampered them with disclosures, financial disclosures, asking their spouses to give their background. And we're asking these people to come and serve, but yet we take them through the wringer on all these background checks. And so we're stuck in this.
That's the public that want transparency. They want to know if we have conflicts, it's not necessarily us. We go through the same thing, right?
Yeah, right, right.
If I may, Senator, our board members are small business owners, so a lot of times it is due to unforeseen, you know, work for their businesses, or they're covering or meetings for their businesses. And I've seen that happen too. So they are small business owners as well, so.
I understand. Thank you.
Good question, Senator, thank you.
Thank you.
Too much disclosures. Okay. Next up, Senate Bill 1325 relating to the Agricultural Business Development Corporation. First up, D-bid.
Standing my testimony in strong support.
Thank you. Next up, ADC, Wendy Geady.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Wendy Geady, ADC, we stand in strong support.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Miyamoto, Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its reading testimony in support.
Thank you. Next up, Pamela Tumpa, Maui Chamber of Commerce in support, Hunter Hevelin in support for farmers' union, Julian Kiabu in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on a measure? Seeing none. Any questions? Senator Wakai.
Thank you. I like the idea of getting different revenue streams onto agricultural lands. But part of me wonders, why does ADC want to help farmers put some kind of tourism element onto their property? That to me should be something private sector takes care of, not you. I mean, ADC should be focused on growing for food, or biofuels, or stuff out of the land. If there's a tourism element, shouldn't the private sector be the one that takes care of funding that and promoting that element on a farmland or ag land?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair, Wendy Geady, ADC. And the reason that we're bringing it forward is our tenants are asking. And our tenants are asking for guidance and support in order to showcase what they're doing. They also see it as an opportunity to do market research, because when people come and visit, and, you know, they taste a product, they're like, hey, have you ever considered putting da-da-da-da? And that's wonderful feedback for the farmer to go, I didn't consider mixing those two things together, and maybe that could be a new product. There's also a strong desire for the individuals just to grow their revenue stream. And that's really what it's about.
Right, okay. I just don't know if it's ADC that should be doing the market studies and all of that. If I'm a cacao farmer and I want to have a tourism element on there, I would go to the private sector and get private funding to go do the market study to see how viable it is, and then get the investment from the private sector to do all of those things. I mean, you have such limited resources, and shouldn't those resources be focused purely on growing stuff out of the ground and have some other entity take care of the tourism elements that would be on the land? Not a question, just my sentiments, thanks.
Senator Fukunaga.
You know, in the areas that you're providing farm support, aren't most of your farmers immigrant farmers and small, really, types of lots?
We really have, I'm sorry, Senator, thank you for the question. We really have a bell-shaped curve. So we have, one of our farmers is the largest banana farmer in the United States. One of our farmers is a significant size and a tomato farmer in this state. And then we have all the way down to, to your point, a lot of immigrant farmers who are bringing their kids into the operation. It's one of the most encouraging things that I could showcase, is the fact that they're adding their sons and daughters and looking for more land, and definitely looking for more opportunity to support their families, which aren't just one, it's like two and three when the son and daughter join. Did that answer your question?
I think so, because, you know, in some of my prior experiences, what we found was for many of the Chinese and South Vietnamese and Cambodian organizations, it was really becoming family businesses. And they're the ones that are really sort of struggling to get onto the land. So with ADC helping them get onto the land, and, you know, assisting them in growing their businesses, I think that's really a bright spot on the horizon, especially in the central Oahu area. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Moving on to Senate Bill 1541 relating to Wailea Water System. First up, ADC, Wendy Geady, sorry.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, I'm Wendy Geady with ADC. We stand in very, very strong support and can answer any questions.
Thank you. Next up, Stephanie Waylen from Kuniya Village, Odi Corporation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Stephanie Waylen. I am now managing the Kuniya Village, which is the ex Del Monte plantation. And it's essentially a complex of agriculture workers that mainly work for farms in the Wailea area, and also for agriculture businesses that can get long-term leases. So there are several of the farmers, they're not able to be here. And I do have testimony here from Mr. Goswaran. I'm just going to incorporate a few of his thoughts with my thoughts. So I think it's really important to understand that in this area, it's probably the only area that you have lands that are designated IAL by farmers or on agricultural easements, which is keeping that land in agriculture forever, rather than the former large landowners who just sit on it, okay? So I think that's a very important thing to remember when we're talking about the Wailea ditch, because that provides the water for these farmers and for people that are dedicated to agriculture, which is hard to find in perpetuity, okay?
Thank you. Your time is up, and we have your testimony.
Okay.
Next up, Robbie Melton, Hawaii Ag Research Center.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I'm Robbie Melton. I'm the new Executive Director of the Hawaii Agricultural Research Center. We are a nonprofit organization dedicated to innovation agricultural research that supports the Hawaiian farmers and producers. We have 108 acres and 44 research projects. We also support seven GO farmers on our land. The Wailea Water is the only ag water that we have. We strongly support this measure because right now, we pay higher than regular water rates because of the Wailea, so we strongly support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mariah Yoshizu with Ulupono. Thank you. Next up, Alan Takemoto.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Alan Takemoto. He stands on his testimony in strong support.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its reading testimony in support.
Thank you. Farmers Union, Hunter Hevelin in support, Larry Jeff Farms in support, David Arakawa, Land Use Foundation in support, Hawaii Crop Industry, I mean, improvement associations in support, Randy Cabral, and.
in support, Randy Cabral, and Je- Janet Ashman, all in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on this measure? Thank you, uh, members, any questions? I just got one question, A D C, please. So Wendy, is the Wailei, is the Wailei Water System the largest water system that supports farmers?
It's certain, I, I would say that from, it depends on what you're talking, like in terms of miles, in terms of volume, I would say it's probably in the top three.
What, what about usage of not just big farmers, but individual small farmers?
There is a certain parcel that we, um, provide water to, and that does have thirty-three small immigrant farmers on that land, and that is the only water source.
You guys have a, um, some data on the different ethnic backgrounds that uses that, whether it be, um, native Hawaiian, um, you know, uh, different, uh, like Cambodian, or you, do you have those numbers as well?
I know the individuals, so I can just tell you that they are Chinese, Thai, Vietnamese, Laos, we do have Hawaiian, um, and I, I think, you know, that kind of runs the gamut. And they're doing some of the most exciting work in ag.
And, and what other water systems that A D C manages, and how many farms are served?
Oh my goodness. All total, we have over a hundred farmers that we serve, and we have large water systems in Kauai on western side, and in addition to that, we're in the process of doing an executive order to acquire the East Kauai irrigation system, and so that will lend itself to a lot more individual farmers, and on top of that, we're trying to acquire the Waikiki irrigation system, and that provides water to over seventeen thousand acres of land.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions? Okay, thank you, um, we are going to go right into decision-making. First measure of Senate Bill ninety-six, uh, relating to tourism, uh, we are gonna pass with an S D one and make any necessary technical amendments and defect the effective date to July first, twenty fifty, and in the committee report, uh, have them, uh, incorporate or take a look at the recommendation by the Tax Foundation of Oahu.
To consolidate.
To consolidate emergency special funds. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Up next, Senate Bill one-six-four-one, relating to the State of Hawaii Film Commission. I am gonna defer the decision-making to December, not, to Tuesday. Oh my God. I'm on Christmas already. To Tuesday.
That session will start.
One oh five, in room two-two-nine. Yeah. Uh, I, I need to gather a little more information on this measure. Uh, next up, Senate Bill one-three-four-three, relating to the Small Business Regulatory Review Board, uh, passing with S D one and making any necessary technical amendments and defect the effective date to July first, twenty fifty. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up, Senate Bill one-three-two-five, relating to the Agricultural Business Development Corporation. Uh, we will pass this with an S D one and make any necessary technical amendments, uh, defecting the effective date to July first, twenty fifty. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next up, Senate Bill one-five-four-one, relating to the Wailei Water System. Uh, we also pass this with an S D one and blanking out appropriations amount, uh, to reflect in the committee report and defecting the effective date to July first, twenty fifty. Any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, uh, okay, members, uh, we also have a one-twenty agenda decision-making. The purpose of this decision-making is to insert substantive provisions into the following two short-form bills. A public hearing will be scheduled at a later date, at which public testimony will be accepted. The first bill is Senate Bill eight-nine-one, relating to Economic Development, proposed S D one, which establishes a gaming working group within the Department of Business and Economic Development and Tourism, and requires a report to the legislature. The Chair's recommendation should be to pass S B eight-nine-one with amendments and recommitted back to Economic Development. Tourism amendments are to insert the contents of the proposed draft. Members, any questions?
Something had a gaming working, no?
No, that was just a sports online.
Oh, online.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Senator Kim?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next bill is Senate Bill eight-nine-three, relating to E- Economy, proposed S D one, which grants a twenty-year licenses for casinos in the New Aloa Stadium, Entertainment District, and Hawaii Convention Center, establishes the Hawaii Gaming Control Commission, imposes fifteen percent wagering tax on grocery streets, establishes a state gaming fund and compulsive gambler program, appropriates funds. The Chair's recommendation should be to pass Senate Bill eight-nine-three with amendments and recommitted back to E D T. Amendments are to insert the contents of the proposed draft. Members, any questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair goes aye.
I vote yes, Senator Fukunaga. Senator Kim? Senator Kim?
Uh, I'm gonna vote no.
Senator Awa?
No.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.